Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting, this county council meeting for Fairfield on Monday, May the 12th, 2025. At this time, we would like to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we will have approval for the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion is second.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to amend the agenda.
Mrs. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda as follow: to remove item 9A and 9C after item 17, executive session. Okay, the motion that we hold item 9A and 9C until after the executive session?
Second.
Okay, it's been, uh, second. Are you prepared to vote? Any question? All in favor?
Uh.
All right. Opposes? Let the record show seven zero. Now, we're down to invocation.
Back to the original motion.
Oh, I apologize. Uh, you've heard the motion to accept the agenda as amended. Are you prepared to vote? All in favor?
Uh.
Opposes? Okay, record show seven zero. Now, invocation, Councilwoman Peggy Swearingen.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us to enjoy. We thank you for your love, Lord, and we love you. We, uh, as we come together as a council, uh, please be with us as we try to make the best decisions to move this county forward, Lord. Uh, be with all of us as we travel to our homes respectively. We thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy that you have bestowed upon us, Lord, for we ask all these things in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Swearingen. Now, we get down to the approval of the minutes, regular meeting on 4/28/25. Administration and Finance on 4/28/25. Are you prepared to vote?
Second.
Motion is second. Let me approve it. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? Let the record show seven zero. Now, we down to item six, public presentation. The proclamation of recognizing EMS Week, May the 18th through the 24th, 2025. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Are there members of EMS present? You can come forward.
The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience subtle ill- sudden illness or injury. Emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. The emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medicare providers, medical providers. The members of emergency medical care services, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaver saving skills. It is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the emergency medical services week. Now therefore be proclaimed that Chairman Clarence Gilbert, District Seven, and the Fairfield County Council do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 51st anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week: We Care for Everyone. We encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in honor of the EMS profession and the essential service it provides. So order this, the 12th day of May, 2025.
Thank you, county council, for recognizing EMS Week and all the hard work that has been, um, provided, um, by the staff that's here tonight. Um, just a quick introduction of who they all are. Uh, Ms. Dominique Perry, she is our, um, captain here on A shift. Everett Johnson, Emmanuel Denny, Ricky King, Lieutenant of Education, Patrick Deneen, and Deputy Chief of Operations, Sam Larrabee. Again, thank y'all so much for honoring this week that's gonna happen for us starting next week. We appreciate it and thank y'all for all y'all's support. Thank you.
We certainly thank you for your service. And I, uh, is it Director Tim? Do you not have the new ambulance outside?
Yes, sir.
Will it be available after the meeting in case someone wants to?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys. Thank y'all. Now, we down to item seven, public comment session. Dr. Roberts?
Yes, sir. First speaker is Dylan Pullen.
You want to read the?
As Mr. Pullen comes to the podium, I have a disclaimer I would like to read. Thank you, Mr. Pullen. Um, Fairfield County Government welcomes public input during appropriate times at county council meetings. Such input will be allowed in the time, place, and manner determined by the Chair of the County Council as the Presiding Officer. Persons wishing to speak must conduct themselves in the following manner: Sign up to speak at the appropriate time. Refrain from engaging in conduct or speech that seeks to disrupt or disturb the meeting. Respect the time limit for the public comment. And refrain from public attacks or personal statements about individuals or individual or individuals. Such statements are disruptive because this part of our meeting is not conducive for such exchanges between individuals. As stated, speakers are expected to express themselves within the time, place, and manner previously described. Any violation will result in a warning from the Chair of County Council or the Presiding Officer. Any failure to heed the warning of the Chair or Presiding Officer will result in the violating speaker forfeiting their opportunity to finish speaking or to speak during the remainder of the council meeting.
Allowing me to speak before you today, I neglected to ask Mr. Carpenter if I could do this during public presentation time, but just, just for a moment, wanted to say thank you guys for your support, uh, for the 2025 Wings and Wheels Air Festival. It was a 20th annual one that was held this weekend. And quite frankly, when the rain started to pour in, I thought, good, I'll be home in time for lunch, uh, and get some rest, but that was not the case. Uh, we started several years ago clicking an estimate. Of course, we don't stop the cars and say how many people are in your car, especially given the weather. Uh, but last year, we clocked over, a little over 1,100 people. And this year, despite the weather, uh, we clocked about 1,300, it's actually 1,371 people, uh, who attended the event. So the event was, was a little bit larger than it was last year. Uh, the biggest problem we had was parking. Uh, we had to get out there and play parking attendance, and that's okay with me if that's the biggest problem we have. Uh, as well as the South Carolina River Museum, they prepared for 200 people. They had about 150 riders last year on their free train. Uh, they sold out at 200, and they turned away people. Uh, and they, they estimated it was around 30 to 50 people that they had to turn away, uh, because they did not hook up another car, not thinking that they needed it. So it was overall a very successful event. Uh, people stayed throughout the day. When it started raining about 11 o'clock, they stayed, they mixed, they mingled. The vendors did very well. Uh, not gonna steal, uh, Ms. Brian at the airport, her thunder, but she did a phenomenal job getting some of the new exhibits out there. Of course, the jumpers were able to jump once before the inclement weather moved in, but overall, it was a tremendous weekend. So thank you for your support. I know that Ms. Brian will probably come and address you at a later time. This year as well, we actually tracked. We asked people to tell us where they were coming from, and we tracked it a little bit. Uh, and we've got people from Pennsylvania, Maryland, North Carolina, all over South Carolina, lower part of the state, upper part of the state, uh, and even one who was on vacation here from Alaska, who decided that they were in a neighboring county. They saw it on Facebook and decided to stop by. Uh, so we've got some pretty cool statistics this year that we haven't had in years prior to track where some of these people were coming from. And so we did a lot of advertising promotion, print media, digital media, as well as radio advertisement. But overall, we want to thank, uh, the Air and Analytics Commission for sponsoring the event. All the first responders were there present. Live entertainment all day long. SNS Aviation offered their typical flights. So it was just a tremendous weekend. So thank you for council, for your support, and for the council members who attended.
Pamela Woodley?
Counsel, let me, oh, let me lower it. Sorry about that. Thank you all for having us. Um, I am here representing the Taylor's Creek area of District Two, um, on Lake Watery, and I have some handouts. Can I just bring? I apologize. I didn't realize I could have done a, an actual PowerPoint presentation. So I printed it out for you. So as it's going around, um, my husband and I went out and threw a rake all through Taylor's Creek. That's where we live, so we wanted to represent. We threw the rake and we pulled up algae, the stinky nasty algae that is all over the area. So I know that you've all seen this map before with the, um, areas that the algae has taken over. It's very predominant in Taylor Creek where the launch is. It's very smelly. Um, I am here because we have people in our neighborhood who are trying to sell their homes, and they're valued at $800,000. They'll never get that. They'll never ever get that. The second map is a picture of Zillow and all the homes that are for sale on Zillow in Fairfield County on Lake Watery. And you'll see the, the asking prices. They will never be able to sell those homes with the amount of algae that is floating in the lake right now. You can't take your dog out. You can't swim in it because it'll make you itch. The last picture is a picture that is on Zillow of that $800,000 home. And you tell me, would you want to go swimming off that dock? Cause I certainly wouldn't want to. And this is right in the cove of Taylor's Creek. So I know the state park, we pulled some algae from the backside of the state park where there's no campgrounds, but people do swim over there. They take their dogs over there. So I am just asking that the council considers when Lake Watery Association comes to you and asks you for the budget, that you seriously consider it and will approve it hopefully, so that we can get back to living on our water like we had planned to when we all bought our homes there and have paid our taxes. Thank you.
My name is Eugene Moon from the mountains of South Carolina. My concern is, um, I'm working on this property up that, that I got to work on, and, um, and, um, the, the person that I'm talking about, he, um, he, he approached me in a, in a manner that I don't wanna, I don't wanna dress, dress again. And, um, and, and another fellow I had working up there with me, he told me that, um, that he didn't like, um, white people, um, coming up there, staying up there, whatever. He didn't want white people up there. And I'm going back to this job, but I don't want to go back there and be harassed. Call you. If you came and asked me about a flower pot that I don't know nothing about, you come to the place where I'm working at, and you ask me about the flower pot. I don't know nothing about no flower pot. But I want to come up here and do the work. I can't do the work if I'm being harassed by somebody. I'm talking about, could I name the individual?
No, sir, you can't call names.
Um, well.
Mr. Moon, if you, I'll be glad to get with you after the meeting.
Say that again?
Mr. Moon, I'll be glad to get with you after the meeting, if you'd like to talk to me and share.
Yeah, but, um, I'm coming back in to work. I want to be safe. Yeah.
What he's saying is that, uh, he will talk with you, please talk with the administrator after.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm. I'm coming, I don't want to be harassed, you know, if I'm, if I'm doing a job.
Okay, the administrator will, will, will work with you. Thank you.
Hmm. And that's about it. All right, thank you.
James White?
Um, I'm Mr. White from Chaffin, South Carolina, and I'm coming up here to, on behalf of just working up there in Fairfield County, Jenkinsville, uh, being harassed all the time, doing any kind of work up there. I said, I ain't, not gonna name no names, but, um, just getting to the point.
Likewise, if, if, if you have that problem, Mr. Carpenter will be the person you can talk to after the meeting. He can listen to your, your grievances and try to take care of, do what we can for you.
All right.
If anyone else has the same complaint, then please see Mr. Carpenter.
Brian Taylor? Todd Jacobs?
Uh, hi, I represent, uh, trust, I'm the trustee for, uh, Todd Jacobs Educational Trust. I've been working up on Lakeview Drive for probably 20 years. My family's own property there. It's under my kid's educational trust. And during that time, I've had my property fraudulently annexed in to the city of Jenkinsville, which I have proof of that. I've been to the Secretary of State's office, and it was done by petition. When it was petitioned into the city of Jenkinsville, they're supposed to notify the owners. The owners was my family. I was never notified, and they claim that my grandmother was notified. My grandmother was dead at that time, and I have proof of that. Um, I don't understand why I'm even having to keep proving that I was annexed in illegally. I've been to Secretary of State's office several times. I've talked to Shannon Wiley. I'd like it investigated. There's fraud going on over there, and nobody knows what to do. She's very upset about it. They've investigated all the signatures that were done for the reevaluation, for them to be established as a municipality. I went and talked to one of the senators, and he signed off saying there was 84 signatures over there for the people that lived there. I'd like them all validated that they really lived there. The funny thing is, when I met that senator, he laughed and said, you know, there's only 40 people in that town. And he signed, I didn't know it at the time, a piece of paper saying there was 84 people there. And that's probably filmed, and FOIA could probably pull up the film of me being there in that conversation. The other problem is, I've had a permit over there in 2012, and, um, and it was signed off by the mayor and the county, and none of the zoning has changed. And I'd like my permit reestablished. If I can't do that, I want to stay in the county side and just forget about Jenkinsville because there's no accountability. The mayor also runs the water company. He makes all these claims. There's no validation. The water company, I was told through Utility Commission, I have to talk to the council to validate what he says about where the water lines are. There's no truth to what he's saying. So I would like my property to be removed because of the fraud, or if that's a problem, I just want to be able to build on the county side. I've talked to the county attorney and the zoning director. They don't even know where the county lines are, and they tried to help me, but they don't know. Surveyor's not gonna tell me that. I need a reference from the county. They should know where the boundaries are, so when I build, I'm in compliance. Nobody knows, and I'm not gonna tell the county where the line is. That's not my job, not at all. Somebody needs to give me a reference, and I'll move forward. This has become a nightmare for 20 years, and Jenkinsville keeps doing whatever they want, and there's no accountability. Thank you.
Phil Frye?
Name's Phil Frye, um, 171 Elton Walker Road, Blythewood, just outside of the town limits. Somebody may know me from my five years of being the Executive Director of Blythewood Chamber of Commerce, during which time I established some quarterly forums, uh, to address the ongoing workforce problem, particularly since the COVID era, that, uh, people can't find people to come to work and do the jobs in qualified skills. Um, so sooner or later, it says, let's do something about it. And for the past 18 months, I've been pursuing the effort of forming a charter high school for trade skills in our community and area. And July of '24, we formed our nonprofit, which is Academy for Skilled Technical Trades. And the biggest challenge, finding a facility location to, to house a student population and the matriculation in the curriculum that we would want to do. We're nearing to the consummation of a property. We finally found near Ridgeway and, uh, met with the town council there last week to introduce part of our program. I've, uh, shared a flyer here with the chairman to distribute for the council. And, uh, one of the things that if we've been talking is that let's have a, a town hall forum. Would residents, particularly Ridgway and nearby, be a good neighbor? Would do the same for the county as to take Q and A and what's going on, and we'd love to, um, put that together. We want to be a community partner, a good neighbor, and produce adult life-ready youth with skills for the future. It's certainly needed, and, uh, that's our mission. Thank you for your time. If you've got any questions, please feel free to call us.
Randy Bright, Ridgway, District One. It's budget season, and I think we can all agree, the primary purpose of a budget to ensure the maximum benefit from taxpayers' dollars and other revenue, so that the taxpayers can enjoy a better quality of life and a safe and secure future. I have noticed an increase in budget scrutiny this time, and I thank you for that. Another thank you, council, is that you've done a good job the last couple of years of reducing your own budget. Some $30,000, then some another $20,000. So thank you for that. In that same vein, one of the issues that we are overlooking in our budget processes are the financial statements. And let's first go to the financial statements of the third-party NGOs' allocations. And we're looking at nearly a million dollars or more allocated to these people, to these groups. One of the issues that, uh, I want to bring up is, are we looking at how effective these organizations are using the dollars that they have now? Are you looking at their financial statements? There's all kinds of guidelines out there. Charity Navigator is one of them for third-party percents. In other words, what percent of their operational revenue is going to their mission statement? What percent is going to overhead? If the high, if it has a high overhead, then obviously they're not accomplishing like they should with their money. And you're doing, when you, you're doing a favor to the people that these organizations serve. You're doing them a favor by ensuring that the money that they're getting, whether it be from the county or whomever, is actually being used in an effective, justice way. The Charity Navigator generally, uh, uses an 80% bar as a, as a bare minimum for some charitable organizations to go to the mission statement. They generally say 65% for some organizations is a minimum bar. In other words, if there's a charitable organization that you're looking at, and you want to give them taxpayer money, it's your job to ensure that that organization is efficient and effective. I'm not saying it's not, but it's your job to ensure that is, so our taxpayers go the right place, to the right people, and are actually effective. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Now, we're down to item eight, public hearing. Dr. Roberts?
An ordinance of the county council for Fairfield County authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, an incentive agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Project Mega Cable to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters.
Okay, we open this up for public hearing.
Okay, we open this up for public hearing, six twenty-nine. Anyone sign up to speak?
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgway, District One. I realize it's not the council's fault, I'm just raging against the system here. A hearing without any specific information of what the deal is on this mega site, or not mega site, but mega project. We don't know how much money, don't know exactly what it is, I can look it up, and it probably has to do with the cable that's going around the country installations. But the rage is, is that how can we have a hearing if the citizens don't know anything about it? And in fact, even in the agenda, there even is a portion that says, oh, well, it could change, and we could negotiate further. So this is just a rage against the system, not against the council. It's a waste of time having a hearing on something that nobody knows anything about, or no public citizen knows anything about, or no information that you can give out because of NDAs. Not your fault, just problem with the system, and we need to fix it. And it starts, everything starts at the bottom level. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Okay, this hearing is closed at six thirty. Now we're down to item nine, ordinance resolution and orders. Item A and C is postponed to after executive session. Item B, Dr. Roberts.
Second reading, ordinance number eight forty-four. An ordinance to consider the request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number Five ninety-nine and the related zoning map to provide for the rezoning classification from I-1 Industrial District to B-2 General Business District. Tapsmack number, tax map number one zero seven dash zero three dash zero five dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero, located at fourteen ninety-six U.S. Highway Three Twenty-One North, Winsboro, South Carolina, owned by Sammy J. and Grace P. Colley. Note, the Fairfield County Planning Commission approved this rezon request.
Okay, the motion is second. Mr. Carpenter, would you give us some explanation on that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as has been stated previously, this is an item that has come in front of the Planning Commission previously. They've approved it. It is a rezoning of land, Industrial District to General Business District, which is essentially taking the land that is, it's currently in Three Twenty-One North in Winsboro, and it's just reclassifying it so that they can have a better opportunity for marketing the property if they wish in the future. So it's not really changing anything of great significance in that respect.
Okay, council, you heard the motion, second. Mr. Cobach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two points. One point is that in earlier documents, and specifically the recommendation from the Planning Commission, it referenced two different addresses on U.S. Highway Three Twenty-One North. It referenced the fourteen ninety-six and sixteen seventy-eight. And sixteen seventy-eight happens to be our Fairfield County Animal Shelter. So I think there may need to be some revisions to that document to make sure we don't get confused that we're talking about our animal shelter. Mr. Carpenter, is that accurate, or is there a reason why that should be a part of that discussion?
Mr. Cobach, as I understand, the county does have some access to the land right now for horses, things like that, that we, in the event that we have any, that we are responsible for bringing in. We do not use it on a daily basis, per se, but it is something the county has access to. And so we do have agreement with the property owners.
My understanding about the access for the horse field and barn is that that's part of the property that's being rezoned or requested for rezon. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if it is rezoned and sold, do we have a plan for taking care of horses in the future if we don't have that, access to that property?
I don't have a plan in front of me right now to answer the question, but we will. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Are you prepared to vote? All in favor? Opposes? That the record shows, seven to zero. Board and commission minutes, none. Board and commission appointment, none. Old business, Accommodation and Hospitality Tax Commission recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm going to recuse myself from this item due to a potential conflict. I'm gonna recuse myself from this item.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like for you to moderate this portion also. I have to recuse myself for conflict also.
And Mr. Vice Chair, Madam Clerk, if I may, I just want the record to reflect that both Mr. Pauli and the chairman left the dais and were not present during part of this discussion and deliberation. Just want to make sure the record's clear of that.
This portion of the agenda commences with the Fairfield County Accommodation and Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee Appropriations Request for Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026, Official State Funding Recommendation to County Council. The State Funding Recommendation Summary. After careful review and discussion, the advisory committee recommends full funding for both applicants that submitted requests for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, state accommodation and hospitality tax appropriations. The project, number one, Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce requested twenty-two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Recommended, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Old English District Tourism Commission requested twenty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Recommended, twenty-two, twenty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Total recommended funding is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. The individual project recommendations. Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce requested two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars. Recommendation, fully funded, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. The committee vote was unanimous, three in favor, three recusals due to potential conflict of interest. The rationale. The chamber serves as Fairfield County's designated tourism development agency, and is primarily supported through state accommodation tax appropriations. The requested amount reflects a modest four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars increase from fiscal year 2024 to 2025, which accounts for a rise in operational expenses, including salaries for the chamber's three full-time staff and visitor center utilities. Without this funding, the chamber has indicated it would be forced to reduce staffing, likely down to a single part-time employee, significantly limiting its ability to serve the public and promote tourism countywide. Old English District Tourism Commission requested twenty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Recommendation, fully funded, twenty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Committee vote unanimous, six in favor. Rationale, the Old English District provides an annual multi-platform marketing campaign that promotes tourism throughout the region, including Fairfield County via digital and print advertising, co-op campaigns with SC, PRT, and their widely distributed destination guide. Fairfield County receives dedicated placement in these regional efforts, and benefits from shared access to photo and video content created by OED for joint promotional use. The requested funds would directly support advertising, guide promotion, and marketing materials showcasing Fairfield County tourism assets. The conclusion. The Accommodation and Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee believes these state funding recommendations represent the most effective and impactful allocation of appropriated resources for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. Both requests align with the statutory purpose of the state accommodation and hospitality tax funding by supporting year-round tourism marketing, visitor services, and regional collaborations. The committee also acknowledges a current carryover balance of one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and sixty-one cents, which will increase once the 2024-2025 state accommodations disbursement is added. These funds must be allocated and used within two years, or they will be returned to the state. The committee is committed to ensuring timely and strategic use of these funds in accordance with all requirements. We respectfully submit these recommendations to the Fairfield County Council for consideration. Is there a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a motion that we go along with the recommendation of the...
I'll make a motion that we go along with the recommendation of the Hospitality Tax Committee. On both.
Any discussion?
What's the total amount that they had to decipher from? The grand total, what did they, what were they to...
Two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand...
I know, but was the total in that fund that they could have asked for?
Two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-six.
I know, but what was the balance before they started asking in the state fund? How much money did the state fund hold?
How much money does the state fund hold?
Ms. Stevens, can you? How much money was available for allocation? Please come up, could you come up, please?
Thank you, council. So the total amount this, in the carryover balance from the twenty-three-twenty-four year was one-hundred-and-forty-two, wait, twenty-two-four-twenty-five carryover year was one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. So that's what's in the bank right now, but that's carryover from last year. Those are funds that weren't disseminated last year. On July first, we will get the twenty, the twenty-four-twenty-five funds that will hit the account. And there is a breakdown, you don't know exactly what that total is until it actually hits. But for last year, just for reference, we received three-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and forty-two cents that went into that. And like I said, the carryover balance was one-forty-two-five-twenty-three and sixty-one cents.
So roughly after July, we'll have four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that will be available?
You don't know exactly the amount, but you're talking anywhere from, if you look at the trends, anywhere from two-hundred-thousand to three-hundred-thousand plus. And tourism numbers are actually going up, so tourism numbers in Fairfield County, as Ms. Parrish just warning told from the EOD report, that we have increases across the board in all the metrics as far as tourism goes in Fairfield County. So we can't say for certain what that number will be, but it will be, you're looking at anywhere from three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars available, after those funds are disseminated.
So are these the only two entities that can get state money?
That has to go to a tourism organization, like a tourism agency that promotes tourism. The local ANH tax usually goes towards like smaller projects, festivals, and different things like this. This is designed for funds to go for organizations that promote tourism. So technically in the county, I believe that's probably the only two that would be eligible for these funds, for the state funds, because they're the only tourism agencies in the county.
But what about the train? I mean, they're bringing ten thousand people, you know?
They also apply for local accommodations tax, local accommodations and hospitality tax. So their request was filled through the local funds.
Well, not all of their requests, but, so they cannot apply for state funds? Is that what you're saying?
They have in the past, but they've realized that the local accommodations and hospitality tax, we actually draw more money through those funds. So they figured that their request would go through better through the local funds.
Well, how much was the total in the local funds?
In the local funds, so when we began the process, Mr. Killian told me we had an eight-hundred, about eight-hundred-thousand dollars, but that was unaudited. We actually have closer to a million dollars in those funds after we got the audit done. And we disseminated, I think it was one-ninety-seven, I don't know the exact last three digits, but it was like a hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand dollars, so there's still eight-hundred-thousand dollars left in that account.
Well, so why didn't we give the train people the Greenberg connect with them? I mean, if we got, we had a million dollars.
That was the decision that was made by the committee. And these were actually the twenty-two-four funds that were dispersed. So when we did the local round a few weeks ago, a few months ago, that was actually the twenty-two-four funds. And the committee, with it being new, wanted a chance to see how the organizations use the funds and different things. The committee made the decision to award two of the projects that they put out and fund those projects fully, and then we'll revisit whenever we do the twenty-two-five funds for the local funds, the local ANH tax funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask while Mr. Stevens is at the podium, Mr. Carpenter. I understand that you're working on some guidelines and rules for going forward with the ANH tax committees. So you have an estimate on when those guidelines might be available? And what would the next steps be after those guidelines are available?
Mr. Cobach, staff will come up with some proposed processes that we would recommend that be followed in the future. Those would come in front of the Administration Finance Committee for review, and then to the council for approval. And then that would set the process going forward as far as dates, as far as timelines, as far as the rules that would be followed. Using existing organizations across the state that have been doing this for a number of years very successfully is a starting point, and then just adjusting it as you all see fit and as we see fit for this county purposes.
And Mr. Salido and I, Community Development Director, we're actually going to sit down and work on just some governing guidelines for those, for all our committees. Because right now, we don't, we don't have official for each one, but we're making those for each committee. So we have governing guidelines. Any other questions?
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Call for the vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Alright, the vote has been carried by total for the State Funding Recommendation Summary and the Individual Project Recommendation. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, we're now down to new business, none. Item fourteen, County Administrator Record, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, several items in front of you tonight. As you know, I tried to address concerns at these meetings that have come up in the past perhaps, and as we've heard tonight, one of the issues that was presented at the last meeting was related to Lakeview Drive. So just an update, on that, staff has met with the parties, most recently with Mr. Jacobs, who is here tonight speaking, on his issues and his concern for later. We've communicated to him exactly what he needs to do in order to move the process forward. The statement has been made that they need the county to verify the boundaries, and that is not the responsibility of the county to determine the city limits. It is responsibility of the town to determine its own limits. So the town of Jenkins, because the county did not create the town, we had nothing to do with the creation of it, therefore, we don't know the boundaries of the town. In creating the town, the town should have created those boundaries as well. So we will again continue to refer them back to the town for the purpose of where the boundaries are. The same thing for the Water District. The county is not, does not own those water lines, the county is not responsible for those water lines. We do not know where those water lines are. They do not, we did not put them in the ground. They're the only ones who will know where the water lines are, therefore, the county cannot determine for them where those lines are. They must determine where their own lines are. So the issue for Mr. Jacobs will have to be resolved at the level of the town and/or the Water District, which we have shared with him. The town's, I'm sorry, the county's issue with Mr. Jacobs still is simply that he has received a permit that he violated, so a stop work order was issued. That has not been resolved, therefore, it is in front of a judge. He requested a jury trial, which rescheduled it till the twenty-eighth of this month, the two o'clock. So a jury trial is scheduled to be held at the twentieth of this month between Mr. Jacobs and the county. The judge will at that point make a determination, one way or the other, and the county should, will then be done with that process based on the judge's determination of that. So going forward, we'll reiterate that this is a civil matter between citizens. The county cannot solve every problem for people, and this is one of those problems that ultimately is the responsibility of the neighbors to work out in these issues. We are protecting our rights from the standpoint of the permit that was issued, and again, we have shared with Mr. Jacobs what he needs to do in order to be legal from the county's perspective of placing that building that he has placed. So his steps are in front of him, he's fully aware of that as well. Does council have any questions of me on that issue? Okay, thank you. Then just an update on the budget, we had a work session on last week with outside agencies. Again, it was a lot of people, not a lot of time. We did run out of time for that. I will assure the council that as we go forward and develop a robust budget process in the future, that meetings such as that, I don't know where the best interest of everybody's time, but it was good for them to get the opportunity to address council members on their needs. We do have a, there'll probably be at least one more work session with the council where we're looking at the budget itself, the proposals, and input being taken from the council to me as well. We are currently scheduled for a second reading of the budget on June ninth, and after that, have the need for another work session as well. So I would imagine two more work sessions and at least two more public meetings on the budget between now and the end of the year. Next item, as you recall, the last meeting again, was requested about support for the proposed incorporation of Buckhead. I will be submitting a letter, a very standard letter, to Mr. Henderson regarding it. Basically, this is, as I said, a routine letter that just indicates that the county's services as currently provided will continue to be provided to citizens of that area. So the sheriff, EMS, any service such as that that is currently in effect will remain in effect as long as it's appropriate and as long as it's suitable for. So that is a letter that I'll be issuing. We will not be requesting anything other than that from the county. Again, it is not the county that creates the town, and the county doesn't get involved in the process of creating it itself. I want to bring to the attention of the council that, as you know, with the audit having been submitted, one of the commitments the county has made is to get some outside third party to work with us in looking at our processes and our procedures, to streamline them and to fine-tune them, to make sure that we are best able to meet the challenges and the needs necessary. Staff is reviewing a proposal currently that upon staff working with the auditing firm will then come in front of the council for your support and approval on this. This is a critical step we need to take. It would probably spread over this budget and the next budget as well. I would imagine a cost of it would be probably approaching close to fifty thousand dollars, just so you're aware, but again, that'd be spread over two budget years in doing that. And then finally, I seek some action from the council...
Excuse, what was that amount again?
Towards fifty thousand. Yes, sir. Then, as you know, the county has been a supporter of the Fairfield Community Food Bank, and they've requested an updated memorandum of understanding, which I've shared the draft with the council. It's still a draft. Met with Ms. Luce this morning again. Staff is having some input with them, but I seek the council's approval for me to negotiate that MOU and sign it so that we can move them from where they are into the building on Calhoun Street. And so, Mr. Chairman, I ask the council's approval for that to happen.
Okay, council, hopefully you've read the MOU. Are you prepared to vote?
Just authorizing me to negotiate it. It's still a draft, so that would not be, you're just approving me to actually go forward and finish it up.
I got some discussion.
All right, first and second.
Mr. Carpenter, wasn't there an agreement also with Fairfield Forward occupying that building, and how's that going to relate when it comes to the food bank?
I spoke with Mr. Clausen earlier today about that. I'm not aware that they have any current investment or interest in that, so it would be between the county and not Fairfield Forward. In the past, Fairfield Forward was the entity that negotiated and signed that on behalf of the county. This would remove Fairfield Forward as that entity, and it would be between the county and the food bank.
Okay, you heard that, second that we gave, allow the administrator to move forward on this MOU. Are you prepared to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes?
Nay.
Clerk of council, none. Now we come down to county council time. Any councilman with to speak, councilperson with to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to congratulate the Fairfield Career and Technology Center, which is located next to the high school. They just received a pretty prestigious award as School of the Year, and my understanding is there's only three of those given out nationwide. Regardless if that's accurate or not, that's a very big achievement, and I really congratulate the school. It's very impressive, the capabilities they have there. They have cosmetology center, barbering center, electrical center, construction, culinary. It's just really, it's an impressive facility. The second thing and last thing is that we have heard recently over several weeks from many citizens here in public meetings and via emails and texts to individual council members about a concern they have going back to standing committee appointments. And so I pledged during my campaign to listen and respond to citizens, and that's, I want to live up to that. So with that, I would, Mr. Chairman, move that we add standing committee membership to the next regular meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just to ask administrator, do we have the dates for the next budget work sessions?
Yes, I'm going to work with Dr. Roberts to work with the council to set those. Thank you.
Any other councilperson?
I would like to make, this is basically my observation. I think each and every one of us who are council members want to represent our constituents as best we can, and sometimes in representing them and listening to them, the discussions can get quite heated, and you can get emotionally involved in it. I would recommend that after you've, we've listened to our constituents, we go back and do our own investigations, because sometimes we fail to understand that there are missing points, there are missing facts, and we walk away with eggs on our face. And I'm speaking from my own personal experiences. The best way to represent our constituents from my perspective is that we do so honestly and ask that they be honest in their assessment of what they are complaining about or what they are, what they're talking about. Because, and I say this and I mention this because we can really get bogged down in minutia, and we don't want to. We want the facts, and sometimes there's nothing we can do about the facts, and we need to tell them that and be honest about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank everyone that came out to the town hall meeting at Gethsemane. We had a nice crowd. I want to thank the councilones, councilmen that came to support us, and especially Mr. Vic over there, because he's just, he's just got away with words, and he just let it slide through, but it was, it's really good, and I think it's really good when we have these town hall meetings, and people can come out and talk to us and tell us what your concerns are, and get to meet our new administrator, because he is, he is a shining star in this county. That's all I can say about Mr. Carpenter. Thank you.
Now we're down to executive session time. Item A to discuss a matter relating to the proposed location expansion or the provision of the service encouraging location of an economic development project known as Project Mega Cable in the area served by Fairfield County pursuant to S.C. Code thirty-four-seven A five. And item B to discuss a matter relating to the proposed location expansion or the provision of service encouraging location or expansion of an industry or other businesses in the area served by Fairfield County pursuant to S.C. Code thirty-four-seven A five. Can I get a motion?
Second.
A motion, second, that we go into executive session. Any question? Are you prepared to vote? All in favor? Opposes? The record shows seven, zero. We're now in executive session. We're now in executive session.
Can we get a motion to come out of executive session? The motion is second that we come out of executive session. Is there any comment? Not prepared to vote, all in favor? Opposed? We're now out of executive session. I'd like to make the statement that no action was taken while we were in executive session. Is there a motion? Uh, that we go back to item nine, item eight. Roberts?
Second reading.
Second reading ordinance number eight forty-six. An ordinance of the county council of Fairfield County authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and a company identified for the time being as Project Mega Cable and other related matters.
Is there a motion? Motion second. Mr. Copton, you'd like to... Um, Morgan?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have before you this evening on second reading ordinance number eight forty-six. This is directly linked to item nine C, which is ordinance number eight forty-three. They're both involving Project Mega Cable, and momentarily we'll have the third and final reading of the ordinance regarding the fee in lieu of tax agreement. But this is a secondary agreement that the county, this ordinance provides that the county would enter into a lease purchase agreement, which would allow for the project to, in essence, lease property on a lease, in all actuality, a rent-to-own type situation wherein they would make lease payments of six hundred eighty thousand dollars over ten years to ultimately pay the amount of the purchase price of a building that they would use for their economic development project here in Fairfield County, which is estimated to bring in over twenty-two million dollars in new investment, not including the cost of the building, as well as, I think, approximately one hundred and twenty-five jobs. So what this particular ordinance does is allows for the lease purchase portion of this business deal to go forward.
Okay. Are you prepared to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Let's record show seven zero. Item C, Dr. Roberts?
Third and final reading ordinance number eight forty-three. An ordinance of the county council for Fairfield County authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and a company identified for the time being as Project Mega Cable to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits, and the provision of a county electricity grant and other related matters.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Uh, Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance number eight forty-three by substituting the ordinance approved by council at second reading to the ordinance presented to council at third reading that changes the name of the economic development project from Project Mega Cable to Mega Metal Incorporated, and approve the same language changes to the pilot agreement also presented to council at third reading.
So move.
We'd like to ask Ms. Broadwater if she would come up and give us some information on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is it on?
Hello? Okay. All right. Project Mega Cable involves the establishment of a new copper wire manufacturing operation at the Fairfield Commerce Center speculative building. It represents a capital investment of thirty-four million two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, twelve million one hundred and sixty thousand of which is in building acquisition and renovations, and twenty-two million one hundred and twenty thousand in machinery and equipment. It would be one hundred and thirty-five new jobs within a four-year period, of which one hundred and twenty of those are close to thirty dollars an hour average wage above Fairfield County. There would also involve fifteen jobs being transferred from another country to Fairfield County with an average wage of forty-three dollars and twenty-six cents.
Any questions? Are you prepared to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Let's record show seven zero. Is there another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? We adjourn.